Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna do is open up for public forum if there's anybody here wishing to address the council that's not on the agenda. Please step up to the podium, give your name, address, and tell us why you're here.
Hi, I'm Mary Wilson from Halsted and I'm on the Brick Street Committee. And I just need to inform you, we're getting ready for Brick Street. It's the second weekend in October. And I have worked, was talking with Ethan about also having Grace Hill, the winery, come and serve their products, and how it works, and that we would like to inform the city council that we would like the approval for Grace Hill. I have already talked to Grace Hill and they would love to come, and they also do their craft beers now, along with their wines. And so I do have their alcohol sheet, and then we need to get the city's approval to Grace Hill, so they can send it to the state to take care of that, is why I'm here tonight. Right now, we are about thirty to thirty-five vendors at this point in time, food vendors, that's counting our food vendors, and with our crafters. So things are rolling pretty good. Like we said, Amy and I were just talking, people wait for the weather. So, is where we're at now. Any questions on this?
What were you at last year, and how many attendees, vendors, did you have?
See, I told you, you need to stand up here.
That was just moral support. We were right at sixty, between fifty-five and sixty.
Yeah.
So, we typically get that last push once people see like the ten-day forecast.
Okay.
And then they slam us with the applications.
Ethan, have you visited about this yet? What's our plan? Are we gonna, a special use permit?
Yeah, we would issue a temporary permit, I'm sure, you know, Grace Hill. Or Brick Street, either one can pull it. The city basically, if they can get their state temporary license, then the city just issues our own temporary license.
Then will there have to be an area fenced in around that?
Typically, yeah. An attempt permit, they're gonna have to have the parameters set up of exactly where they're gonna sail. But part of the state permit process is asking whether the city would approve it or not, so we advise them to come to you all, make sure that no one had any qualms about. I mean, Brick Street itself will be blocked off, they will have to have a separate area within that.
And we do know that we'll need to post no alcohol beyond the points, cuz we close the streets down. And we knew, we knew, we know well, we'll take care of that, that will be no problem.
I don't see a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with him. You just need a kind of a thumbs up to proceed then. Yeah, I don't have a problem with him.
Yeah, this is kinda stepping into new territory for us, but we want Brick Street to expand and grow, and we think this is something that could...
I think it's a great idea. I just, you know, worried about the semantics, what it's gonna take to do it. Obviously, you guys are gonna be coming back asking for that street closure, probably. So, yeah, and I know, probably based on the state's response time, we need to get this done, probably.
That's why we wanted to get this part done, and then...
Ethan, do you need this? Their license?
Uh, yeah, we can reach out.
Alright, and that's it. Then we'll be back in two weeks, next time with the street closure forms, and anything else we need?
Very good.
That's it.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, ladies.
Is there anybody else here wishing to address the council under the guise of public forum? Seeing no movement from the audience, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum, and ask for agenda changes and the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one item under new business to add, be item number four, which will be a discussion of the potential sale of three oh eight Chestnut.
Alright.
With that, Mr. Mayor, having reviewed the consent agenda as submitted, I would make a motion to approve it.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, uh, do we need to open a hearing for this revenue-neutral rate, or?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna, at this time, I'm gonna open a revenue-neutral rate hearing. And I think everybody understands we fully intend on exceeding the revenue-neutral rate with the budget for 2025. If there's anybody here wishing to speak about that, other than the city, come forward. There is nobody. Would you like to address anything regarding that, Ethan?
Um, I'll just note that the proposed budget, we gave notice of a potential mill rate of seventy-five, which is over the mill, or revenue-neutral rate. We are at seventy-four point seven-five, so we did come below even what we published in the R and R. But other than that, yeah, if there's nothing here, we just need to close the revenue-neutral rate hearing, and then we'd need a motion to approve that resolution, twenty-two four oh nine, and that needs to be voted on by a roll-call vote.
Alright, with that, I'll go ahead and close the revenue-neutral rate hearing, and ask for the motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-two four dash oh nine, a resolution of the City of Halsted, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue-neutral rate.
Second. Alright, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. This is a roll-call vote. I'll start with you, Councilman Will. Are you in favor or not in favor?
Yes.
Councilman Homewood. Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to the twenty-two five budget public hearing. I'll open that public hearing now. There is nobody here in the audience to comment. Ethan, you have anything you'd like to say about our twenty-two five budget?
Um, I will note that we did pass out a new certificate page and a new summary page. The tax rate did not change, so that's the big thing. We can't ever adopt a budget that has a higher tax rate than what we published. The one thing that did change is the sales tax revenue, keeping with what you all had asked. We decided the best way to ensure we were putting more capital money to those quality-of-life projects was to, historically, the city always transferred up to a hundred and fifty-three. We went ahead and bumped that up to two-hundred and three thousand. That extra fifty goes specifically to quality-of-life projects, still keeps the one-oh-eight, one-twenty-five, which is related to the pool bond payment. So, the budget did slightly bump up to the ten-point-one-three-five million, where it was at less, you know, fifty thousand less than that, but that was the only change. And again, it did not change the tax rate. You guys are fine to adjust that, cuz it's not a material change to the tax rate, so. And that sets our authority to allow that transfer to happen.
Anybody have any questions? Makes sense. If there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and close the bu, the budget public hearing, and ask for the motion to adopt the budget.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt the twenty-two five budget for the City of Halsted, authorizing governing body signatures on the state budget forms and authorization to provide said forms to Harvey County Clerk and the State of Kansas.
Second. Do we need a roll-call vote on this? We don't, do we?
Don't believe so on the budget itself.
So, we have a motion and a second to adopt the twenty-two five budget for the City of Halsted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We already approved the consent agenda.
Yeah. Well, you said that, but it was just your agenda you were approving. Now you'll do your consent agenda.
All these extra hearings in here messing me up.
But we did have the motion, we approved it already, so.
No, you approved the agenda. It just was a misnomer on your part, so we need to correct that. Julie will correct it in a minute.
I'll ask for the approval of the consent agenda now. The other one was just the agenda.
There you go. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. I think Brad was waiting for that moment.
I kinda was.
Under unfinished business, we have one item tonight, and that's distressed property at two-seventeen Main. Who's gonna talk first?
Um, just, I guess to, up front, where we are, that's the former Loose Brick Saloon there, kinda directly south of Jump Start, North Pepper. The, we, land bank met and agreed to take transfer of that property if the property owner was amenable. They have been. You all authorize the city attorney to begin working on getting that transferred, and I will turn it over to him to tell you where we are.
I've prepared an agreement, basically, that gives him the appropriate assurances regarding the fact that we're accepting it, and accepting it as-is, where-is. Explain the idiosyncrasies of doing it with a land bank versus this, and all, what that does is to add verarms. Excuse me. The problem that we have that slows this down a bit is he does not have any form of email, does not have any form of access to a fax, so I'm having to send everything snail mail to Abilene. He and I talked at length on Friday. There's no hiccup or no issue from his perspective. So we're just trying to get the documents circulated and then schedule a closing, cuz if you'll recall, I think the land bank wished to have at least some title insurance on this. And we're signing a value, or he is. We're not required to commit to that, oh yes, it's worth that, or that sort of thing. It's just something that we use and it assists the closing agent in determining what we can do for title insurance as well. So, uh, it doesn't take very long to send it. It takes a while to get it back. So, a few weeks, I'm in hopes I've already alerted the closing agent that we'd like to close just as soon as we have those documents, and there wouldn't be anything that would preclude us from doing so. We have the O and E policy.
Is he still wishing to retrieve property out of that?
Um, I'm gonna, I tried to call him again today. Ethan and I talked this afternoon when I was updating him on that, and I didn't catch him. Saturday, I left him a message. He's pretty good about getting back to me to confirm that the agreement also says this, that at the date of closing, anything still in it, at that point, transfers to the city. So he'll have that long, and if he needs a particular date, I've left that blank in that agreement, and he could go ahead and fill in, okay, I need until the, I don't know, twentieth of October, or something like that. So, I think we'll make sure we work through all that.
Counsel, any questions?
Nope. No.
Do we need a motion to continue this?
I would say to continue, maybe until October twenty-eighth, just in light of the fact we're going by a little bit slower communication method than we're used to. That's six weeks, allows us to hopefully have a positive update, or actually have a closing date, at the very least, scheduled by that point.
I would think so, too.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to table the distressed property hearing at two-seventeen Main Street till October twenty-eighth? Is that what you said, Ethan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Second. We have a motion and a second to continue the distressed property hearing at two-seventeen Main to ten-twenty-eight. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, now we're gonna move on to new business. The first item under new business is our solid waste and refuse collection, RFP response review. This is for our trash service here in town. Ethan, you wanna pre-tense that for us?
Sure. At direction of the council, we sent out an RFP for trash collection. That RFP did ask for a minimum of five-year, although any respondent was also avail, or could, they had to bid a minimum of a five-year response, but could go longer than that. We reached out to five contractors. Three of them responded, two did not. The tabulation, if you will, is there. We did just pick the ten-year as the one to show you. We did send out the full responses. It just got kind of convoluted in a tab form to show a five versus a ten versus one had a seven. So, you can kind of see the various items, the mandatory bid components, what was the residential trash pickup? Then we asked, you know, about some community event support, asked, you know, an indication of whether recycling would continue to be offered as, you know, an option or available to residents that is not necessarily an important bid piece, because when the city quit mandating recycling, we do allow that to be a person-to-contractor relationship that doesn't go through the city anymore. We just license the company that would do it. So you kind of have the items there, and had the full responses to review over the weekend. So I guess if there's any questions, or be happy to try and answer. I believe you have representation from some of the respondents to this evening, if you have any direct questions for them regarding any responses. I will note, we don't have a contract in place or anything, so this would still be, if you all, whoever you decide to award a contract to, it's still contingent on us being able to work out a successful contract that's agreeable to both parties to start services, so.
Do you have a question? If we do decide to change vendors, that would not affect, I don't see how that could possibly affect the recycling commitments that residents have individually with the provider. Is that correct?
Correct. Like, the city would not be canceling that.
Right, so.
Now, I can't...
We're only talking about waste.
Yeah, I can't speak as to whether, you know, if the city stopped, and maybe, you know, Nisley could answer that, or their representation. But say you switched away from Nisley, I don't know, you know, the business argument for Nisley, if they don't also have the trash business, but that, that would be their decision. The city would not say they couldn't offer recycling as an option to people that have that service already. They just couldn't do trash.
Right.
So.
Why is it that, that service is available, but it's not a service that is part of what we offer?
It stemmed from several years ago, when our waste provider was having issues with the recycling going to Harvey County, correct?
Um, Harvey County originally had mandated county-wide recycling, so all cities had to mandate it, because it was mandated in the county. And then, when the cost of tipping fees for recycling were going to go up like a hundredfold, the county got rid of it. Halsted also, at that point, said, "We don't want to mandate recycling," and so we released that as part of our contract. And that was based off of a governing body decision on, from citizen feedback they'd received, that more people wanted to have lower trash rates that weren't subsidizing the recycling also.
Was recycling not?
They can reach out to...
Well, yeah, I mean, I get that, but was recycling good for us, or not?
Well, it was something like...
We care about the environment, or not? I mean...
Well, that's the thing. Some, some people...
I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, like, I've, I've been raised saying, you know, that we need to be recycling, but is that false, then?
Well, there are some people that just want to...
So I'm looking at you, because I'm like, y'all recycle, right?
It's, it's, uh, it's an op, it's still an option for those people.
It's a personal preference. If, where people just throw their cans away and let it go instead of recycling.
Sir, are you with Nisley? If, if you were to not be awarded the contract on the city's refuse, would you continue the recycling service you have now?
The answer is yes. We obviously want the trash, too, to go with it, but we will, we would continue.
I think that was the question we needed answered.
No, I wanted to know why we stopped recycling. That is the question I wanted.
It was merely a cost, like our rates, and please don't quote me on what the rates were, but it was like, we were offering trash and recycling for fifteen dollars, you know, a month to residents. And then, when recycling costs increased, basically, four or five years ago, due to changes in the global recycling market, to keep trash and recycling was gonna jump us up to like twenty-two dollars combined a month for houses, or we could just do trash for thirteen. And the governing body at the time said, "We'd rather do trash for thirteen," based on the feedback, if I recall, those conversations that they had received from citizens, as opposed to making everyone pay twenty-five. And we were having issues with recycling of people, part of the issue was people were not recycling property. They were basically just throwing trash into their recycling containers. And then the city was also looking at fines, because our contractor haulers would be getting fined, you know, from the various entities that take the recycling for having unclean recyclables. So, that constant pass up of fees were...
This really helped. The people who wanna recycle, recycle properly.
Yeah, well, sometimes people need help, like, understanding that.
Some people just don't care. You can't make them care.
No, you can't, but you can encourage, like...
So they have the option to...
What's right, even though people, like, a lot of people like to, sorry, I will just stop, but, um, sorry. Do you have, like, a service, like a reserve dumpster, where you could, like, have a recycling station, like, in the community, where maybe you didn't want a recycling cart, but people could dump recycled goods and something like that? Is that an option?
Yeah, well, we researched that, too. We researched that, too.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's been our experience, too.
We'll throw other stuff out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just becomes a real trash site.
So, Shawna, what happened was, after we made that decision to, uh, to, uh, abandon recycling as a city, a number of citizens came back and said they wanted it. They were passionate about it. And Nisley stepped up to the plate and offered it directly to the residents as a service outside of the city. So, it sounds like that will continue, so.
Um, I do have a question in regards to some of the, there's a little bit of difference in pricing. I don't feel like it's a drastic difference in pricing. Is there something that you would say your services are slightly higher due to higher quality of something? Um, you have any idea?
I haven't seen how high our prices are or anything, so I mean, I always argue, I mean, Herschel's sitting right here, I always argue that, that we're a small local company.
Yeah.
Um, and, I mean, you guys have had this service, you, I mean, you had Waste Connections for a while, you have, you've had us for a while, and you know our service. And so, we would just, we would argue that we're the best value.
Sure.
I would argue the same thing. And I think, you know, when we lost it, I think it was price.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think Nisley's been great.
Yeah, I just, it's a shame that the world comes to the, whatever the bottom dollar is, means that that means that one service is necessarily better than the other. I mean...
Doesn't come down to that.
For some people, it does. For, I mean, he just said he lost the business...
Yeah, it doesn't happen.
Ago, long ago, because it came down to price. And I just think there has to be something that says, you know what? You did a good job. You've been doing a good job. You've done us right. Like, there's gotta be, like, at some point, people are willing to say thank you for taking care of us and doing things that we've...
Which is why I would, I would choose Nisley, personally.
Well, all I require is a motion and a second, counsel. However, you guys wanna go?
Staff has made, made the recommendation. Doesn't mean we have to take it.
Right.
Well, I just think, I mean, anytime we've reached out to them for old settlers, or whatever, they bring us things that we need, right? And, I mean, we've never had any problems or issues with any of that service that you're aware of. Is that true?
Yes, I would tell you, we have, we have no issues with Nisley currently. We did not have issues with Waste Connections when we moved away from Waste Connections, so. The RFP does give you all the ability to reject all bids. It gives you the ability to accept any bid. You are not mandated to go with lowest price. Staff recommendation is based solely on, the refuse fund is a pass-through fund. So, again, judging on history with both companies, you know, from our, our perspective, you have very competitive bid. One is at a slightly, or a lower price point, and has a lower ongoing modification cap, if you will, so long-term. Again, you guys don't have to select the ten-year. You could select the five and put it out to bid again in five years, if you want. I mean, it's really up to you all of what you wanna do. The biggest change, I would say, of switching, both Nisley and Waste Connections, they're both offering the community supportive events. The biggest difference is Waste Connections would see us transition back to a citywide cleanup day. And then, we have the reserve dumpster with Nisley. So, those are kind of the large, the big changes, if you will, on the larger bulky item pickup.
How do you think the reserve dumpsters been?
Has that been favorable? You're the one that manages it.
It's been quite successful, yes. We have, I mean, it's slowed down, I think. I mean, definitely, we, you know, we had asked for more dumpsters from them. We've gone back down to three, and we're not necessarily even filling all three a week, but people are still, still taking advantage of that. And heard customers say they really like it.
Well, and it's year-round. That's what I like about it.
Yeah.
It's a pretty handy program.
Julie, that you mentioned previously, was not, not necessarily a big deal with the paperwork and the computer work for the transfer from one to the other. But the transfer for, for the individuals seems to be a pretty slow process, and a fairly tedious process of making that transition from green to blue, or in the last case, blue to green. Cuz there were still some blues around for quite some time.
Yeah, I, I would say that. I think one thing, though, that the bids that we received this time that is gonna make that a little bit different, is both, both companies that are here representing would stick with Thursdays. Before, we went from Thursday, or Friday to Thursday, and then red and green zone, and that really made it a lot more, a lot more difficult for our customers. I still think there's gonna be some transition to it. I mean, but I think that will make it better, whichever way you guys decide to go.
I will say that I've been very pleased with the service Nisley's given. I've ma, I've forgotten to get my uni, my trash out before, and everybody's had this issue, and you make a call, and it's like they make, and I'm sure Herschel, your group would do the same, but, you know, we, we're all recently remembering what Nisley's doing, and I, I know that many citizens have had very good luck with them, and are pleased at this point. But contracts came up, and we had to know. We had to know what the numbers were. Anyone else, Jim?
Yeah, I'm, I've lived through both, like, most of us here, and both of them are quality services, so, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to stay with the Nisley services provided to us. And I don't have, my battery is dead on my thing here. I can't see the numbers, but to go with Nisley's numbers presented to us.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the Nisley proposal for our solid waste. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We will be staying with Nisley, but thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item under new business is a street closure request at the three-hundred block of West Street.
They left.
Who's gonna update us on that, Ethan or Julie?
Julie.
You're so funny. We had a citizen come in, Carolyn Armanderas, and they are wanting to do a West Street block party. This is kind of a celebration for the May nineteenth storm damage and cleanup that everybody has done. It's gonna be called "We Weathered the Storm." They've asked for the three-hundred block of West Street to be shut down from four PM to nine PM. To make it easy on staff, they didn't request barricades. They simply requested some cones to block off the street. Will take very minimal staff time or funding to make this event happen, and I don't think staff see any issue with it.
They got all the signatures from everybody?
They did. They got fifty-one percent that was required. I think that was...
Only fifty-one percent?
Yeah, it's just one block. There was one, two, three, four, five signatures, and I think there's eight that live on the block. The cones would still allow the vehicles to, no, you can't come and go at all. Nope, not from, not from four to nine, not, unless it's...
There's no, there's no alley.
Mm-mm. I don't believe there is an alley there, is there, Pat?
No.
On what day?
I was gonna ask if either the chief or Pat is creating any problems, issues for us traffic-wise.
It's West Street, and they can go over to Sweetsie if they need to get...
Honestly, they live there.
Saturday night.
Well, yeah, but they would move cones if you're resident late in your driveway, I would assume.
I would hope.
You'd think they'd be part of the block party, but...
You'd think.
Well, not everybody is, maybe.
I'd like to hear from those three people, but, I mean, I would think it'd be up to them.
Yeah.
I mean, what, I mean, they're gonna, they're obviously gonna have things in the street, whatever. I mean, what, I mean, they're gonna, they're obviously gonna have things in the street, whatever, barbecue.
And you're all neighbors, you're gonna get, you know, you're gonna help each other out. Hey, I'm home, can you move your cones so I can get home?
I mean, I can reach out to the other three people that live on the block and report back to you guys next meeting. It would be nice enough if they were even aware.
At least a yes or no.
Yeah, how they feel about it.
Yeah, yeah.
And if they say they don't care, then it's fine, but if they say no, then we should, I mean, they have rights too, you know?
Okay.
With that, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to table this, uh, subject until next council meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, table the discussion regarding the street closure request of the three hundred block of West Street till next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, next we have, uh, city in a USD four forty facility use memorandum of understanding. Uh, are you gonna go through what this, what we're understanding with the school district?
Um, yeah, so, uh, we've had basically a longstanding agreement with the school district for, uh, co-use of each other's facilities. Uh, we've checked our records, they've checked theirs, we can't find anything that ever formalized this, kind of always a handshake agreement, if you will. So this just kinda lays that out there, sets, you know, some basic things like us indemnifying each other, notice of claims, that we'll cooperate if there was an issue. Um, spells out some specifics as far as, you know, we understand that school events take priority if the city was to have something scheduled at the school. Likewise, they understand that if we have city events, you know, we could bump a school event off of ours. Um, it talks, you know, just basically that we're, we're okay with Wedgwood being allowed for regional cross-country. Uh, have ran this by, uh, Grant and Sam. They didn't have any issues. Um, spells out, you know, no entities expecting fees from the other entity for use of facilities. That will make sure that we, uh, whoever's using it on our behalf, be it a rec program or a school, you know, sport or class, that they'll make sure that everything's clean. Um, you know, report any damage done to the facilities, that kind of thing, so. Again, just trying to kind of get something formalized between the two entities, so.
And I'm sure, counsel, you've gone through it, and you don't, haven't seen anything.
It's pretty much mutually reciprocating, so whatever they're asked to do, we are asked to do. Um, and it does cover the, the, kind of the informal list that I always go through in terms of checklist, liability issues, that kind of thing, so.
Sure.
I think we're good.
Well, unless anybody's got any questions or comments, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, uh, the proposal for, uh, u- use memorandum of understanding contingent on this except, acceptance by USD four forty authorization of the city manager to sign based on governing body input.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this MOU with the USD four forty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Now, the last item under new business, we did add this item, it's a resolution regarding the, uh, sale at three oh eight Chestnut. Ethan, you wanna bring us up to par, or Brad gonna do that?
I'll let Brad kinda go.
Sure. Uh, you'll recall on this particular piece of property at three oh eight Chestnut, we have a pending set of distressed property proceedings. Under our, uh, code, chapter four, and it's actually four six oh four, if I remember correctly, cause that's what I noted in there, I'm pretty sure. Um, there is a limitation and an ability for the city to preclude transfer of the property from one owner to another for logical reasons. Somebody can keep transferring it, you know, and you have to start over each time for purposes of distressed property proceedings, someone can prolong this for quite a while. And I've had those instances many years ago before that was put in place in certain cities where they would transfer it to, from A to B, then B would transfer it back to A, then A to B, and they would mess with you, um, in some ways intentionally in a lot of cases, so. That has real value to have it in place. However, in certain instances, if you have a new owner and you're confident that the likelihood of remedial measures or that, that it's going to be a positive transfer and a successor will be able to do things with it that the, the prior owner will not, the city has the ability to come in and just not object. But the better way really to do this, as far as I'm concerned, is to go ahead and formalize with a resolution that we have no objection, um, to this, even though we've got legal proceedings in place pursuant to city code. And I also put that in the resolution, we reserve the right to continue those. The successor entitled is noticed up that way, and, uh, and it will continue on, and it doesn't mean it slows down. If we don't feel like there's a, an ability to do so, or there isn't a good reason to do so, it necessitates that we continue. So all of that is contained in here. Um, basically what you're doing is just saying, we know about it, and we're not going to object to it. Um, and that's more of an explicit approach to this as opposed to just saying, well, they didn't ask us, but we're not gonna object. But I would think from the perspective of the buyer and seller, it would be more, uh, reassuring to know that this has been passed by the city. Um, there may be a change that we need to make to it in terms of some element of the exhibit that I put together for, and all of you have seen it, uh, at one point or another, but done so and you're privileged. Um, so that certain things aren't necessarily public that don't have to be in that particular instance between two private parties on a sale and transaction. So I would ask that you, if you do approve it, that you do so subject to staff review, so we can make those corrections.
I, I just see so many things that can go wrong with this. I just see so many things that can go wrong with it.
That's why you guys get the big dollars.
You know, I'm concerned that this transfer is made, and while we have one party carrying the note, eh, the paper, and hope, there's gonna be this contract in place. I'm still concerned that by s- some way, he's gonna claim breach of contract, he's gonna put a cease and desist on the project, and we're gonna be no further along than what we have now. I mean, he's pulled so many rabbits out of the hat in the past, I would put nothing past him. I'd hate to see the new group get in there and start making an effort, and then they're pulled into court or litigation because he's made a false claim. I mean, you know, I, I'm being ridiculous about this, but I mean, he's been ridiculous about this.
We can't police that, though, George.
I know we can't, but it's like, I, 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 I. You hear what I'm saying, though?
I do. Bill, uh, obviously you're involved with this, uh, what would you like to add to?
Me, I, I agree with you said, I mean, that's our risk to take, and I mean, I hear what you're saying, as far as a private pro, or entity. I mean, I guess my question would be, what are you concerned about as far as the risk to the city? If we approve this resolution, because it really doesn't change anything, it just gives us your blessing to go ahead and close properly. And yes, we are, Bison Foundation is taking that risk, but that's something we're willing to do.
Well, as Mr. Mayor said, we, we can't police it, it's just, it's just.
My, my personal feeling is, is, is if the deed changes on that property, maybe something will get done with it.
And I, I, I'm wishing for the best of success, I truly am. I, I, I mean, that's an asset to our community. What a shame that it's where it's at right now, and we're even discussing this. I, I, I wish you the best of success, I really do.
Well, in reality, nothing's gonna change until those renovations are done, right, that are, put it in the distressed property. So just because we get ownership of it, until we complete those renovations, nothing's gonna change, it's not gonna go out of distressed property. So even if Ozzy pulled something at that point during that period, you guys can go demolition it, or demolish it at any point. So it's really, nothing changes until we get those renovations done, and then it comes out of the distressed property. Then all the risk comes to us as far as him being the lien owner, and at that point, worst-case scenario, pulls something and whatever, we can't move forward.
Well, that's.
At least it's safe for the public at that point.
I hate to see you guys get two, three hundred thousand into it, and all of a sudden you got the brakes put on you.
Still feels like a deal with the devil, man.
Feels like what?
It's like a deal with the devil.
Well, I won't comment on that, but.
Bill?
I get, I understand.
My mom taught me, if you can't say something nice, don't say anything, but I see this as a positive move forward. But it is going forward. Now, it may not go as forward as, as far as we want it to, nor as fast as we want it to, but it is a step forward.
Well, we think so. I mean, I understand the risk, I mean, you, I mean, you have two options, really. You just blow us off and you go and demolish that thing, and it's gonna be in Ozzy's name for eternity, cause he's not gonna do anything.
So at least there's a chance.
It give us a chance to get it out of his name, cause if we get ownership and then we can pay it off, he's off the title, he's off the land, it gives us a chance, and that's all we're asking.
Well, what are your other options for your vision? Like, if not Halsted, then what? Do you have a plan B?
Well, we got other projects in, in the works, but they're not contingent on this one way or the other.
No, I mean, like, you know, like, you have project and vision for what you're wanting to do with this, like, if that didn't work out for you, do you have a plan B for that project, for that vision, or that?
Yes, in another town.
Right.
Uh, but we also got plans for the hospital, which is a separate project. Um, and that's not contingent on the Halsted Inn one way or the other. They would work good synergy-wise together if we could get them both, but.
Well, I'd hate to be one that put a stop, I mean, it's, there's a possibility for, I mean, there's a fifty-fifty chance that this goes through and works well for you guys, and I hope it does. And, and, but I, and obviously you can tell my level of frustration. And I'm just, I'm vent, I guess I'm venting more than anything, and I'd hate to be the one to pu, pu, put a kibosh on this and not let you move forward.
Well, I mean, I don't think that you're wrong for being hesitant about anything that's got any part of this prior person involved in it. Um, you, along with anyone else that's been part of this for as long as you have been, uh, have every right to feel that way, and I've only been here a short time, but I have very short patience for nonsense, for sure, and I obviously only want the best for the community, and so, um, I too am hesitant about anything in regards that that person has, I mean, I.
I think at this chance, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think at this chance, at least it's a chance, and and I don't wanna pay for another building to get demolished if we don't have to.
Yes.
That's, that's the whole, then let it sit there. That's my biggest issue.
That one's gonna build close to a hundred thousand.
I'd rather take a chance, and if we gotta mlinger along for another, whatever, then we do that, but my patience will end if we see nothing happen. I'm just gonna say that.
Fair enough.
Yeah, and that's a promise.
So with this, are you looking for a thumbs-up consensus, or? Do, I, I, cause I don't.
We have a resolution we're gonna pass, but do we have a resolution number for that resolution, Julie?
Uh, there's, it'll be eleven, I believe.
It should be ten, shouldn't it?
You ha, I don't have it in front of me.
Twenty twenty-four.
Well, you can do ten since they didn't pass that street closure.
Oh, well, I need to talk about that.
So.
Okay, so it'll be ten, and I'll move the other one to eleven.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten?
Can do it, subject to staff revision.
But Mr. Janson, you say there was something we needed to discuss and further before we?
No. No, there's just, I made an, an attachment, uh, as part of the draft of the resolution today when we discussed this that includes private information between the parties that, uh, isn't necessarily needed, per se, as part of this, um, to pass the resolution. I'm gonna remove that, because I don't think the parties particularly wanted all of that disposed. Once you pass the resolution, if that's attached as an exhibit, it's public record. And so, uh, you would pass this resolution, understanding that I'm gonna take that off of it, but doesn't affect the legality of what you're doing with regard to the resolution itself.
Okay, will you just clarify again what this is all about, so that we've had some other discussions take place back and forth, so I just wanna make sure what I'm saying, I'm in favor of or not.
With this resolution is that we're not gonna block the sale. We're gonna let him sell the property to the Bison Foundation. Because technically, with the property under a distressed property hearing, we could block that sale.
Right.
We think it's in the best interest of the city to get that ownership transferred, and we really wouldn't have to do anything.
Right.
But we're just putting this resolution out to make it clear that the city's gonna.
Because we put that into that prior, right, that it couldn't be sold without our approval.
Part of the ordinance structure that we have in place is, is that including of a sale.
We, right.
You can choose not to object, which is what the mayor is saying, so you could do nothing. But if I were counsel for either side on this, I would be like, excuse me, I don't think I wanna go through with this whole thing and start exchanging money, and then have the city come in and void this whole agreement, which is a potential. What this does is gives them a written record, uh, at, at a normal meeting with a quorum, if you voted in favor of it, that says, we're not gonna do that. It also reserves the right, and it puts them all on notice, including Bison, that this doesn't change the fact that the property itself is subject to, as, as Bill was saying, um, a distressed property proceeding, so if they don't do anything, even as the new owners, we keep on going. And you don't start all over, and you don't have to publish again, and you don't have to go through another hearing. We just, you know, we're at the point where you could pull the trigger on this, and that doesn't change, and it doesn't take a step back.
Right.
Okay?
Got it. Thank you.
I'm not sure on the word salad of this, but, uh, I make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four, uh, dash ten, a resolution blessing the transfer or sale of this property at.
Not objecting to.
Subject to staff revision.
Subject to staff revision at, uh, where's my address?
Three oh eight Chestnut.
Three oh eight Chestnut.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four regarding the property at three oh eight Chestnut. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
No.
Aye is the same sign.
Whatever, I'm not in favor of it.
Giving you a hard time.
I'm gonna throw my pen at you, Ethan. Don't laugh at me.
I'm laughing at the mayor.
He's, he's laughing with you, with you.
Are you ready on that motion?
It's a Monday after, like.
Yes, sorry.
We have several executive sessions this evening, and I would entertain the, uh, motion for the first one now.
I move that the city council recess into executive session to discuss trade secrets and property financial information on a private corporation, confidential data relating to financial affairs of trade secrets and corporations, partnerships, trust, and individual pri, pri, oh.
How do you say that?
Proprietorship.
Proprietorship, I'm sorry, I lost exemption KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B four to include the city manager, the city attorney until eight o'clock.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, we'll move to the back room, counsel. Pose same sign. We'll move to the back room, council.
Okay. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll go ahead and ask for our motion on our second executive session.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council recess to executive session to discuss confidential financial information by a pri- of a private company. Confidential data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets, corporations, partnerships, trusts, individual prioritaries, exemption KSA 754319B4 to include the city manager, the city attorney to re-adjourn or come back in session at 8:20.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll move back to the council room. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we'll head to the back room, council. We are back from that executive session. Any action to be taken as a result though? Hearing nothing from the council, I'll move on and ask for the motion for our next executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the Holsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation involving the city in conjunction with consulting with our attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption KSA 754319B2 to include the city manager, the city attorney and return back in open meeting at 8:30.
We are back from our executive session. Any action as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we do have one more executive session this evening. I would entertain that motion now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss performance of a city employee and protect privacy rights. Personnel matters of non-elected personnel exemption KSA 7543-19B1 to include the city manager, the city attorney, and we will return back to open meeting at 8:40.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to enter back into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're in executive. We are back from our last executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing no movement from the council, we'll move on our agenda, and the next section is the report section. We'll start with governing body comments tonight. I'll start with you first, Jim.
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Charlie.
If you haven't tried the food truck food on First Street, you're missing out. It's very good. And it's a good business to have here in town. I'm glad to see they're trying to make a go of it.
Done?
That's, I'll stop there.
Did I cut you off last meeting?
I know. Jim's, well, I've got something else, but I'll bring it up later. Get a later date.
No, sir. Thank you.
Gosh.
I'll give Charlie my time. Uh huh. We're good.
I'm good tonight.
I'm, I'm good as well. So that'll take us to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things this evening. MPL has finished up the gas main and service line project over in the Ninth and Walnut area. Work has started on the Ninth Street wastewater and street improvement project between Chestnut and Spruce Streets, and that project is anticipated to last about 40 days. Work continues on finishing out the interior of the speculative building in the industrial park. The city has received the additional financial contribution from Harvey County EDC, and hope is for the project to be finished in the fourth quarter. Scout Park and Lehman Park final plans have been completed by Baughman incorporating some of the comments and suggestions from the public feedback session. We will have some phone boards of those finalized plans printed out so we can use those in subsequent meetings. Preliminary plans for the North Street Improvement Project were just sent today for our review, so staff will be meeting with the project engineer and some of the stakeholders involved, especially as we probably have to talk inevitably about drainage on North Street as we continue work on that project. Staff have also begun working with the city's bond council and will be reaching out to secure financial advisor for the project as it progresses. Miracle Signs will be meeting with Public Works tomorrow to deliver the hardware for the sign bases and to discuss the footing plans for the five wayfinding signs that will be installed. We're hopeful that as long as weather cooperates, that those signs will be up by the end of the month. Planning Commission will be having another public hearing to discuss the proposed draft battery energy storage system or best regulations on September 16th, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. Those draft regulations are available via the city's website for anyone who'd like to go in and look at them, and there will be a chance for public comment during that meeting. There is also a potential for, or there is also a potential lot split application on the agenda for that Planning Commission meeting, and that will be heard prior to the best public hearing. And then a reminder that the plumbing material survey needs completed for all residences and properties, including commercial and industrial in the city of Halsted. A survey can be found online via our website or picked up at City Hall. We'll probably send another email blast to all of our utility customers. Where response rate is not where we would like it to be. The city will begin personal outreach at some point this month to try and gather this information. It is required by KDHE and APA guidelines in the coming weeks, and we are mandated to collect and report the information. So we are trying to figure out the best method to get that information. So that is all I have for this evening.
Counsel, anybody have any questions for Ethan?
Mayor Travis, can, can we revisit the street closure?
Sure.
Mrs. Armandiris came in and she was a little upset about the decision because if they, we wait till the next meeting, that's six days before their event, which wouldn't give them enough time. So I did contact all the other individuals on that block while you guys were in your executive session. One of them's actually a city of Halsted employee, and she was fine with it. The other two residents, they were absolutely in favor of closing the street for the block party in order to have that. So everybody in the 300 block, along with 902 West Fourth, which has garage access off of West Street, they're all fine with it. So if you guys would like to revisit that this evening before we adjourn.
Sure. Well, yeah, let me get.
And we had a resolution on that, didn't we?
And that resolution number, since you, you passed the 2024-10 for the other resolution, this resolution will now be 2024-11.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion approving temporary closure of public right-of-way thoroughfares and public access roadways on and along 300 block of West Street in the city of Halsted, Kansas, for a time and date specified herein.
Have a motion in a second for this street closure on West Street. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you, counsel. That carries.
Thank you for that, Julie.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Julie.
Sure.
Going above and beyond. Some of us expect that out of you. Well, that being said, that does conclude our agenda this evening, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment, unless Charlie would like to speak on that other subject.
At a later date.
Okay. So move.
Table it.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, counsel.